We will return to the Land Use Planning Committee, Mr. Fig.
Yes, Mr. Schetzel, you want to finish?
Thank, yes, thank you, Mr. Fig. So, beyond the setbacks, I was, and I pointed out that we had four companies prior to our July 9th meeting that filed their commercial plan review, so I don't believe this would be seen as retaliatory because it simply doesn't apply to those projects that would be going forward. I think that one of the really important things here that we, as we focus on the setbacks, we kind of forget is, you know, the drainage issue, right? I mean, I think that was one of the main reasons that I wanted to get this in place, was we had no protection for folks that would be around a solar field for damage that could be done to drainage. And I had farmers and friends of farmers talk to me about how tiles get damaged, fields get flooded, neighbors', neighbors' yards get flooded, and I just, that's an important thing to have in there. So, I would like, I'm not on your committee, Mr. Fig, but I would like to see this also move forward to a full vote of the council.
Anyone else? Mr. Thomas?
Agree with you, Mr. Fig, and Mr. Schetzel, there's other things. The setbacks, the simplicity of the setback should be 500 feet, period. I don't understand, what's a non-participating abbey?
A landowner that isn't part of the project, that would not lease to one of the solar companies, that would not have their land included in the project. It's 500 feet from a solar panel also to a building wall.
To the what?
To the residence.
From the building?
Mm-hmm.
Why can't it be the property? Why does it have to be the, that's kind of the property line versus the building? I don't understand, what's the big? I think if, if I owned a house, I'd rather have it from the edge of my property than I would from the, from the building. Is that something standard? And, and what you dealt with, or?
We've seen communities implement setbacks, both from the property line and the residence. Some, the property line, some of the residence, and some both.
Why can't we just say property line on all of them, both of them?
And, Abby, didn't we also already have a 250-foot setback from the primary dwelling in our last text amendment?
Correct, the last text amendment brought forward 150-foot setback from the property line and 250 feet from the panel to the residence.
Is there logic on that? And I know I'm being nitpicky here, but building versus the property line, so if my building's here, my property line's 20, I don't understand why it wouldn't be just your property. It seems kind of easy.
This is a text amendment that is initiated by the council?
Yeah.
That came down from the council to the Area Plan Commission.
I didn't read the fight in print, I guess, I should have. No, I'm not blaming you, Abby.
Yeah.
Also, the value of the property value, obvious, it's an obvious thing that we're, we're trying to do here, buffer zones are obvious. We even talked about the battery storage. Have you had conversations with the solar folks about the batteries? And this where they're going to be, and, now, that's another protection we have to have for the residents, is the battery storage. I mean, that's got to be, I mean, that's obviously a fire issue, we don't want it close to any, you know, any buildings. Have you talked to any, any, have you seen other counties or communities do anything about battery storage?
Battery storage is something that a lot of other communities are looking at, adopting standards for.
Okay. And that's not on this, is it?
No, not in this text amendment.
Was it on the other one? I don't think it was on the other one either.
No.
Say it again?
This is what we, this is what we passed as a council.
Right, right. As we, as we've delved into this, though, these are other real questions. And, the decommissioning of this. So, when they're decommissioned, tell me the situation, if they decommissioned in five years or 10 years, what happens then? Do we have enough funds to decommission these things?
Yeah, the de, the text amendment that was put forward by area plan staff addressed decommissioning. It removed the maximum that was previously in the zoning ordinance for a decommissioning fund, that was set at $250,000. The new decommissioning standards that were adopted as part of the last amendment, I believe is for 100% of the cost of construction and removal based on an estimate from a contractor or engineer, less the salvage value, benchmarked to CPI levels. So, the security-
Can you put a dollar on that, can you put a dollar on that at all? Or, I know it's CPI, but where are we starting? How much funds will be in this ordinance? What are we talking about money that's going to be in this ordinance? To, to decommission them?
There's nothing in this text amendment that speaks to the decommissioning requirements as proposed by the council. The decommissioning requirements, or the security fund language that was included as part of last round's revision, was 100% of the cost of demolition and removal of the SES, net the salvage value, based on an estimate as required by, references a section in the zoning ordinance. But it's a contractor capable of decommissioning, or, excuse me, made by a competent party such as a professional engineer, a contractor capable of decommissioning, or a person with experience or expertise with decommissioning large-scale SESs.
But if, if, if the company's not here anymore and bankrupt, then what happens? Do you, I mean, do you have any, I mean, if they're gone-
The decommissioning agreement requires a cash, or a security fund.
How much?
100% of the cost of constr-
100% of the cost of construction of the field, right?
100% of the cost of demolition and removal.
Do we have a number on the 100% of the cost of demolition and removal? We don't.
That's based on the estimate that's provided from the professional engineer or the contractor-
So, we're going to have that?
Yes, that's required as part of the decommissioning agreement.
Okay, I just want to make sure we have that in there. I know we're, we're talking about 100%, but it's going to be in there, right?
The decommission, these-
That was approved in July with the text amendments that were presented to us in July.
Okay. I just wanted to verify that. As you're reading that, it's, I'm, I guess I'm looking for a dollar amount, but you're saying 100%, so.
It's, it's scaled based on the project. It would be higher for a larger project and less for a smaller project. It's not a flat amount, it's based on the individual project.
Got it, thank you.
Any, yes, Mrs. Drake?
Abby, so, the way that it's set up now, like with the, in New Carlisle, so they've got, do they have batteries out there in the field?
Any, I don't recall without looking at the site plan. There have been battery storage that are accessory to solar, that has been, I don't know if it is part of Honey, or the, the project in New Carlisle, but that has been an aspect of the site for a lot of large-scale solar projects.
So, when like, when, when you got the setup for this, the one that we're, in Hexagon, for instance, and it's going through the process right now, and you guys are looking at it and improving it, is it, does it show you batteries right now, or is that something that comes later and is on a different plan?
I would have to look at the site plan.
Because I, I guess, well, so is there no, no rules whatsoever on batteries and storage at all, period?
Right now, we would likely consider, consider battery storage to be accessory to the solar if it truly was accessory based on the zoning ordinance, which is incidental to the primary use. The inquiries that I've received in regards to the large-scale projects were not battery storage fields, but really battery storage pods that might be accessory to the overall solar use.
But there's no other oversight we have of, I don't know if I understood-
Not specifically for the zoning ordinance, but there are building code and fire code requirements that of course need to be met.
Batteries like that.
Yeah.
I mean, what else would have something like that, that we would see that would be similar?
That's something that I can ask or talk with our building commissioner about?
But it, to me, I mean, I think to all of us, it sounds like it's, it's another hole and another gap in our solar ordinance, that we don't have anything in regard to that. I mean, have you seen any, you have seen other, it sounds like Madison County, for instance, has that, I mean, have you seen that, when you guys have done your own research, do you remember, on the batteries in particular?
No.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to motion that we send this without a recommendation.
Mr. Tanner, I don't believe you're on the committee.
This is Land Use, I am on the committee.
Yes, he is.
Oh, you're on, okay.
It's Mr. Morton.
I will second that, then, oh, Mr. Morton, sorry, Mr. Tanner, yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a, no recommendation, motion may be second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, then.
Can I request a hand vote?
You can.
I want to be clear, I guess I just want to make sure.
You probably should have the two members that aren't on the committee identify themselves.
Everybody else is.
Yeah, everybody else is.
Lucky me. Mr. Thomas?
What am I voting on?
This is, this is-
I'm against, so, so what's, what's the question?
Send this to the full council with no recommendation.
No.
No.
Tanner, you, Tanner, you-
No, I'm not on the committee.
Mr. Fig?
Well, I'm the chairman, you probably should go the next, sure, sure.
Yeah, he doesn't bow to us or the tie.
I said a tie.
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Did you get Mr. Root?
Yes.
You voted yes, so I don't, so it passed, I don't have to say anything. So, it goes to full council without recommendation in two weeks. Thank you, Mr. Otter. I'm sure Abby did it, while you were sitting there trying to look at it. So, so next, I just go to the next one.
Next one?
Yeah. I write this down so I remember. Next, bill number 99-24, rezone 25698 State Road 2 from C Commercial and R Residential to C Commercial Petition South Bend Speedway LLC. Carl?
Good evening, this is Carl Brown-Grimm, Area Plan Commission staff. So, the subject property tonight is an approximately 60-acre lot found on the south side of State Road 2. Approximately 30 acres of this property has historically been used as the South Bend Motor Speedway. A special use was granted to allow the property to be used as a racetrack with grandstand seating in 2012, but as many of you know, this use has existed for decades prior to that. The site is split-zoned, C Commercial, primarily where the racetrack existed and operated, and R Residential for the remainder of the site. The contingent purchaser, Insurance Auto Auction, is seeking to rezone the entire site to commercial, as well as to convert the use of the property into an auto auction yard in which they will be receiving and storing non-operational cars onsite and then selling them. Unfortunately, the zoning ordinance does not offer a better definition for this type of use, so they are officially seeking a special use to allow for an auto wrecking yard, which the ordinance defines as an area of land not enclosed in a building, used for storing of two or more inoperable vehicles. So, anything that's outside and has non-working cars is, by definition of the zoning ordinance, an auto wrecking yard. However, staff's understanding of the proposed use is they will not be engaging in any disassembly or wrecking of vehicles, and will operate in a manner that mirrors the existing IAA facility found immediately north of the site. To this end, the petitioner has proposed several written commitments up there to clear up confusion with the use of the site. These commitments clarify that there will be no disassembly, maintenance, or crushing of the vehicles, as well as provision for detecting and handling leaks that may be found in damaged vehicles. In the immediate area, along State Road 2 near the site, there are a number of similar existing uses to what is being proposed today, including the one here directly to the north, operated by the petitioner. Also, the Great Lakes Auto Auction site directly west, and another commercial operation, I believe Veldman's, further west, storing cars. There's a heavy machinery dealer to the immediate west, as well as a self-storage use, and Dollar General retail operation to the east, and an approved gas station that has yet to be developed on the property, abiding directly to the east. This is the current portion of the site where the racetrack is found today. Here's Peach Road looking north toward those other commercial uses. It is important to note, this, this property is pretty large, and as you head south along Peach Road, you run into where the area transitions to residential, as you can see here. The Speedway property actually stretches as far south as to Grant Road, and here we can see that southern half of the portion primarily is owned residential. As you may know by now, much of this, approximately 30 acres currently zoned residential, contains a savanna with black oak that holds unique ecological value for St. Joseph County, and as we now understand, the, kind of the larger region as a whole, and was the focus of much of the remonstrance at the Area Plan Commission hearing last week. It's our understanding that the petitioner has been working with some of the environmental groups since the hearing, which I can let the petitioner speak to if they would like. However, I understand those discussions are ongoing and nothing's really final at this stage. Taking a look at the site plan, this was submitted prior to the APC hearing. The front portion of the site is to be used for loading or drop-off and inspection, while the large majority of the rear of the site appears to be lanes for vehicular storage. There is proposed to be a six-foot fence around the bounds, on, only around the project, within the property, which will be opaque slats north, along the north and south bounds, augmented by type-one open landscape screening, and then it'll be a typical chain-link fence along the east and west bounds, with that full type-two landscape screening to help protect the residential view shed. No access to the site will be allowed from Grant Road, and the county engineer has stated that they will enforce that the access is shown on the Peach Road will be gated and for emergency access only. Primary access is proposed via State Road 2 pending indot approval. As you may know, State Road 2 is a heavily trafficked thoroughfare, averaging approximately 20,000 daily traffic, daily travelers at the spot per MACOG's traffic count. Per the petitioner, there will be approximately 20 to 25 employees at the facility, and they're anticipating between this site and their existing operating site handling 50 trucks per day, so maybe 25 to 30 at this location. The county engineer has commented that while the daily traffic generated by this use may be more consistent than the previous motor speedway use, the peak traffic generated by the South Bend Motor Speedway would have been greater than the peak of this proposed auto auction use. So, staff did initially reach out to indot regarding the proposed use, as we know that petitions along State Road 2 typically have a traffic component to it. They commented that a major driveway permit and turn lanes would likely be required at the location, and it is unlikely that they would approve of the two full accesses shown on State Road 2 as, as it is today. Finally, they would need to obtain more information from the petitioner at the permitting stage to determine if a full impact, traffic impact study would be warranted. As I mentioned at the beginning of my report, the petitioners are requesting both a rezoning and a special use. The Area Plan Commission held a combined hearing on both of these last week, and 39 members of the public spoke, all in opposition to the project, in addition to six letters of remonstrance that our office received. Some members had concerns regarding the nature and location of the proposed use, however, the vast majority of the comments received were concerning the protection and preservation of the rare black oak savanna found on the property. The Area Plan Commission voted unanimously to forward both the rezoning and the special use to you unfavorably, largely taking the public's concerns into consideration. They did approve two variances related to fence height and loading area, subject to the special use approval being granted by you all. However, the, these variances don't take effect if the special use is denied. I'd be happy to answer any questions you would have on this one. Oh, and I did want to clarify, per state statute, kind of going back to that time clock, the special use and the rezoning are treated separately. Special uses have 60 days until they are approved, and then rezonings have 90 days, similar to that text amendment, before it takes effect as certified, so that, based on the Area Plan Commission recommendation, would be denied.
Carl, is the petitioner here?
Yep.
Petitioner, right here. And thank you, Carl.
Good evening, my name is Richard Nussbaum, and I'm the attorney for Insurance Auto Auction, who's the contingent purchaser, and we have the authority of the owner of the property to, to pursue this petition. Happy to answer any questions.
I have a question.
Sure.
My time on the council, I think I received more emails about this one than anything else, and my big question is this oak savanna. I never heard of oak savanna till this came up, but how many oak savanna trees are there out there? Would you happen to know? Does anybody know?
I don't know how many oak savanna, but, but, there's black oak trees, and then it, the habitat is more, and, and this is really going way beyond my pay grade here, okay?
Okay.
But savanna is a classification of some of the plant life that's out there. The point is, is that there are a lot of people very concerned about the preservation of this. One of the reasons was that it's so rare. So, no matter how many trees there are, or how mu, what the habitat is there, this is something that's not only rare to our community, but rare across the country. So, the petitioner, my client, heard the concerns loud and clear. We have had, since last Tuesday, we've had some very productive discussions with a number of environmental groups. They have provided us, as of a day, a day ago, with a couple of maps that would, would significantly downgrade the development and significantly increase the area, protected area. I don't have a final agreement for you yet, we're working very hard on that, so that the number of emails that you might get in opposition to this might decrease. Just because we downsize the development and increase the size of the savanna, black oak savanna protected area, we know, we understand, and we are prepared to provide written commitments with regard to that, so that there would not be any future development. I think one thing that's very important to be, to take into consideration right now, especially if the big issue is preservation of the black oak savanna area, is right now it's zoned R. There are no environmental protections right now, so if someone wanted to develop a residential subdivision, they could come in and tear out everything. So, in a strange way, what we're trying to do, although it, it, it's not something that is getting a lot of support, is going to, at the end of the day, provide much more protection to this black oak savanna than what exists right now. So, there are, I think, very good discussions going on in, in, among people that know what a black oak savanna area is, and we hope we can bring an agreement to the council before October 8th. If we get something before them, we will certainly let the council know. We will try to make it as public as possible, so that those who have concerns about the black oak savanna will, will know about it, but this is not, this is something we knew we had to do, this is not something that we really know how to do, as well as the environmental people. So, right now it's collaborative, we hope we can come up with something. We understand that if we don't do anything, our chances of success before you are not good. So, we, we, we know that we need to do something and change what you have before you right now.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Council, or committee, any question? Yes, Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Nussbaum, how many acres are you planning on using and not using on the property?
Well, that's in flux right now.
Okay, so you're, because of savanna, you're trying to figure that out?
Well, look, this is, this is an oversimplification, okay? There's about 30 acres of Speedway and about 30 acres of black oak savanna. Might be an acre or two either way. So, what we're trying to do, frankly, is we're trying to maximize the development so that it's a economically feasible development, and minimize the environmental issues. So, frankly, that's, that's what some of the discussion's going to be, is how we adjust that acreage.
Can you clarify the business? It's not a junkyard.
No.
So, when the, can you give us a summary of what happens on the property when the car comes, and it makes sure the gas and oils don't spill, and they're not being stored there?
Sure, we, we tried at the Area Plan Commission to go through that point by point, and would do so again at the, at the council hearing, but basically what happens is they, they deal in selling damaged cars. The damaged cars come in at a certain type, there's nothing that's done to them, they're stored, they're sold as-is, and they're moved from the site. Lot of concern about liquids that are within a car, and our commitment was that we would do the best we can to eliminate any liquids before they get to the site. We inspect each vehicle to see if there's some liquids in there that shouldn't be in there, and get rid of those at the site, so that we're as environmentally responsible as, as possible. It's important also to note that the phase, phase two or phase one has shown some contamination there, so that's another part of this development that would help get rid of that contamination that's already out there, and it's probably been there for many, many years. So, it's, it's a, it's an auto auction, storage facility, there's not going to be any smashing of vehicles, there's not going to be any working on vehicles, there's not going to be any tearing down of vehicles for parts. Vehicle comes in as-is and goes out as-is. I hope that-
You don't have any timeframe on storage, do you? Like, anything on the written commitments on that?
We, we don't have any written commitments, I, I don't know the average time. They sell a lot of vehicles, they're pretty, this is a large company, it's, has locations, I think it was 175 locations across the world, they're pretty good at what they do, a lot of their sales are online sales, and their business model makes it, just like a lot of businesses, they want to sell their inventory as quickly as they can.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Tanner's right.
Mr. Nussbaum, can you talk or speak to which environmental groups that IAA or you were working with since last Tuesday, just so we know?
I have been asked to not disclose the environmental groups, at least one of them. One of them is a group that Mr. SASS is the leader of, and remonstrated, and so one of the maps we got was from his, his organization. We worked with an individual who was at the, at the Area Plan Commission, we talked after the meeting, and we put in process that, that we were, we wanted to get a map from them, so what would they be satisfied with? And we got it yesterday. So, what we're doing is we're looking at these maps, we're running the numbers to see whether it makes sense to do this. You know, there's lots of things that might happen at this point. One thing that's probably not going to happen is this, the project's not going to go through the way it's set up right now, we, we understand that. What might happen also, we might have to walk away from the project. And as I mentioned before, that's not the greatest result either for the black oak savanna. So, I think the win-win for everybody is let us try to get our development downsized, let us try to maximize the protected, protected area, and, and be very responsible in the way we develop this property.
Anyone else? Seeing none, may entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to send without recommendation.
Second.
So, we have a motion sent without recommendation, and a second to that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion goes to full floor, no recommendation. Next, bill number 100-24, special use for property located at 25698 State Road 2, petitioner South Bend Motor Speedway LLC.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
All right, this is the special use component of the request, it's a rezone from commercial to, or, or from commercial and residential to commercial, as well as the special use for the use that Carl outlined in the last presentation.
Okay, okay. Any questions? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Motion to send without recommendation.
Okay, motion sent without recommendation, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion goes to full council with no recommendation. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Fig, next up is Heldon Committee, we will return to the Budget Administration Committee, Mr. Schetzel.
Thank you, President Root. Bill number 66-24, S.H.O. County Handbook Revision-
Bill number sixty-six dash twenty-four, S.H.O. County Handbook Revision, petitioner, Commissioners.
Good evening, Council. Peter Augustino, one thirty-one South Taylor Street, South Bend. Here to answer any questions that you may have. There hasn't been any changes or updates to the last form of the manual that was presented. With, I don't want to steal thunder from the auditor, but he's been working hard updating us on the potential cost of the buyout of vacation time and benefit time that's reloaded for certain employees throughout the year. And I think the revised estimate is at six hundred and forty-four thousand, six twenty-nine. That's a number that will change every time you take a look at it, but that gives you the scope. That's a bit less than what we were anticipating last time I spoke to you, which was around eight hundred thousand, so. But I think we've addressed the issues that were brought up. And if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. But I think the goal is to have this be in place for January one of twenty-five.
Any questions for the petitioner? Mr. Tanseray.
Mr. Augustino, I know one of the questions I brought up before was, it didn't appear to be there was a progressive discipline matrix within the document. Did you guys, were you able to address that?
Well, so there is. We did add a recommendation for progressive discipline, but it's not a mandated. So there are steps to be taken, and I can tell you as a matter of practice, those steps are generally followed. However, it's not a system that you might find in some collective bargaining agreements. And even in those, there are escape clauses that you can proceed right to termination depending on the situation. So we do have a, basically reinserted a summary what was originally in the handbook, in the two thousand and thirteen handbook, on how to proceed through progressive discipline steps, but also allowing the county to proceed directly to termination depending on the case.
Also, on the question, I guess what I have would be, some employees, you know, if the buyout occurs, may be losing some of the benefits they've accrued over time. I know that you said the auditor's working on a buyout formula for us. Is that true, that some employees may not actually receive the whole benefit of their accrued benefits if they have accumulated sick time, comp time?
I think the issue that will pop up for some employees is that some employees have an exorbitant amount of unused sick time. So for the, depending where they are in terms of what they have as far as accumulated vacation and personal time, we allow, under the current plan, what's being proposed, for them to convert some of that sick time to available PTO time up to caps for the different age, based on their seniority. So someone with twenty years would get two hundred and eighty-eight hours. If they had some excess sick time and their bucket of vacation and personal added up to two hundred and fifty hours, they could convert thirty-eight hours of sick time to PTO time. But if they have, they may well lose the extra sick time that's not going to fit within the caps going forward. So I think there may be some employees that will feel they're losing something. It's unused sick time.
That's what we've been hearing. That's why I was wondering if that got addressed to any degree of satisfaction of the rank and file employees who have put forth a lot of effort for a long time and maybe not made the scale of wages that they make today that they didn't make for the fifteen or twenty years prior, that were maybe counting on that as a benefit at the end of their career.
It does not get paid out. So unused sick time does not get paid out when employees leave. It's there if they get sick. But it's not something that they receive any cash payment if they don't use it, so.
Any other questions? Mr. Morton.
Is that something that can be discussed and clarified with the employees in any type, any form? Because I mean, you know, this conversation that you and Mark are just having makes me feel like, hey, you know, there's a lot of unanswered questions and different possibilities depending on, you know, the situation.
We can certainly.
I'm just saying for clarification.
We could certainly address for each employee what happens in their particular case. I think we have the information to be able to do that. We can also, and information has been frankly leaking out. We've had presentations to department heads. I think the word has gotten out about this. We're seeing some employees calling sick to burn up some of their time. That's not organized in any way, but it's happening. So we can continue to have discussions if specific employees have questions. They can say, we can take a look at a snapshot of where they're at and where they would end up if there's those questions. And I think we're not talking about a large number of employees here. Probably certainly less than ten percent and probably less than that that are going to fall in a category where they're going to lose some sick days.
I guess, is that something that that particular department head could implement? You know, if that, if it's necessary in that particular department?
I guess I'm not following you, sir.
I guess what I'm saying is, you're saying there's not that many employees, but you know, if you guys are going to try to address this and stop people from calling in sick just because of, you know, what they've heard, is this something that can be implemented by the particular department head?
To stop?
No, no, I'm saying to get the information out correctly.
I think there's a variation from department head to department head on access to information and specifically what relates to any particular employee. But the information does exist. It's accessible with the auditor's help. And the HR department has view access rights to that information. So if people have questions, we can answer them.
Okay. Mr. Fig.
If I'm not mistaken, if you're calling sick for three days, you're supposed to bring back a doctor's note. Am I?
That's generally correct.
Okay, and so these people are doing this now? They're just doing one day? Or are they doing a week?
I don't know.
I mean, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
It's anecdotal, so I don't have any hard statistics or facts.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
It's the rumor mill.
It's a rumor. Okay, it's a rumor.
There's a little smoke, so there might be some fires.
I hear a lot of rumors. Thanks.
All right, Mr. Tanseray.
Sorry, I have one more question. So when I had raised the question before in the employee handbook, the draft version, I don't know if you have that in front of you, page forty. I can kind of paraphrase some of it. Obviously, not every type of misconduct can be listed. Note that all employees are employed at will and San Joe County, Indiana, reserves the right to impose whatever discipline it chooses or none at all in a particular instance. The county will deal with each situation individually and nothing in this handbook should be construed as a promise of a specific treatment in a given situation. However, San Joe County, Indiana, will endeavor to utilize progressive discipline but reserves the right in its sole discretion to terminate the employee at any time for any reason. Is that still in there, that language?
Yes, it is. And I think it would be malpractice if I did not recommend that to be in there.
You don't agree with that, Mark?
To me, it's not consistent in the fact that we can do for one employee one thing and we can't do it for the other, and it's on a case-by-case basis. And I think it's tough for the employees.
I can tell you as a matter of practice, again, that we always look at consistency when disciplinary action's taken because we do not like to be sued for violations of people's rights. You have Title VII, for example. That's a big guardrail. If we're inconsistent in how we administer this, that can create problems. So the language is there to preserve the employer's right. That doesn't mean that the employer does that. But the right is there. It is employment at will.
Mr. Shetzel, thank you. I'm not on the committee for this, but.
Mr. Tanner, please.
Thank you. It's my understanding that even if Indiana's an at-will state, there are still protected classes. And there's still such a thing as wrongful termination, even in an at-will state.
That's right.
So that's a disclosure that is necessary for, again, an HR legal perspective, but it doesn't terminate the employee's own rights that persist as.
No, absolutely not. So there's, as I mentioned, Title VII. You have the ADA, age discrimination. You have Indiana civil rights. You have the county's own ordinance, which extends its protections. You have common law retaliatory discharge. If someone is discharged for pursuing a statutory right or refusing to violate the law, those protections all exist, and this handbook does not take any of those away.
Constructive termination, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, constructive retaliatory discharge. There is such a thing, so.
Say that a couple times.
Yeah, no kidding.
Any other questions for Mr. Augustino? Mr. Fig, did you have a question?
No.
Oh, sorry. I thought you were going for the mic. All right. If there are no other questions for the petitioner, may I have a motion?
Is it favorable?
Second. A motion to move to send favorably in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Bill number six. I'm sorry, did I have a nay?
Nay.
One nay, okay. Bill number sixty-six dash twenty-four goes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
President Root.
Next up is the Rules Committee. We will have a presentation from the Unity Gardens.
Hello, it's an honor to actually share and celebrate our collaborative work. The last time I was in front of you, I believe it was the Health First funding presentation. And the time before that, there was American Rescue Plan funding. So I'm really eager to share kind of what you all have helped us grow. Next slide. And obviously, a recap of Unity Gardens and our work. Unity Gardens has been growing healthy food here in our community for fifteen years now. Although we grow food, we're literally doing much more than that in terms of health and wellness and growing community. Next slide. It started accidentally as my work and as a nurse, teaching at St. Mary's and taking nursing students to places where people who are very vulnerable, unsheltered, or in poverty would get healthy food, or would get food. And it was ironic that it was not healthy food. And so a simple idea, and we could go again, was the idea of just creating a vegetable garden where anyone could pick healthy food. That was back in April of two thousand and eight, next slide. And everyone jumped on board. Although I'm in front of county council, it is amazing that everyone has a piece of this story. And literally, as I look at each of you and our community, I can't be more proud of how this last fifteen years has played out. Next slide. The vision always was about just creating abundance, an abundance of healthy food because that's what allows people to feel free to share. Next. And we've done pretty well, between thirty and fifty Unity Gardens throughout our community, St. Joe County in particular, and one in Plymouth. Next. So here we are, growing all these little food hubs, and what we're growing is something much different. Edible park-like gathering areas where everyone's welcome, next slide. And diverse people find themselves together. And what happens when we're in together in the same spaces is we find the things that help bind us, the things that we have in common, local people, local solutions. Next. The mission was always about not just physical health. We all know we're supposed to eat more fruits and vegetables, but also environmental health, social health, and social opportunities, economic health in communities. Our mission is to connect our community to healthy food nature and one another. Next. What's unique about Unity Gardens is we are unprecedented, not only in our community, in our state, or in our nation. There is no dignified free food model that starts with that, just a handout for people who are hungry, but also no need to stigmatize the idea of free, healthy food. Everyone can access Unity Gardens edible park-like areas, and that becomes an opportunity for growing social capital as well, or access to welcoming green space where it mitigates anxiety and calms people. Next slide. Let's talk a little bit about the collaborative impact we've had. A few years ago, I shared this slide where we were growing at that main site at LaSalle Square over a hundred and eighty thousand pounds of produce, engaging over eleven thousand people in our programs and gardens and supporting over thirty gardens. That was twenty-twenty statistics. And I can tell you with your help, with the Health First funding, that has grown. I can't wait to show those final numbers in December. Next. We do this not only through growing gardens and helping support volunteer garden leaders, but also in education, and that's where you all came and became a hero, a game changer, if you will, with the Health First funding and our educational expansion program. Next slide. Whether it was growing a full-time educator and diversifying what we teach in our welcome center, next. Teaching kids, adults, inside, outside, we captured the spontaneous moment and also have intentional curriculum. Next. Farm-to-fort kind of experiences, chefs in the garden, the celebration is clear. Next. Investing in kids, whether it was garden camp back in the day or after-school programs that you all have helped us fund, or even story time for different age groups in the garden. Getting people to our main site will help encourage them to hold a chicken, feed the goats, or actually just pick some produce and eat it. The Edgy Veggie Mobile Classroom also helps us go into neighborhoods and communities that may have transportation barriers as access to healthy food. And we reached over seven hundred kids just in the first year. Next. And what about the Geoderm, the first four-season off-the-grid growing space, next slide, where we can host field trips during the school year when the rest of the garden is kind of flat, brown, or white compared? That is last December, believe it or not. So we're amazed at how many groups, field trips, et cetera, kids and adults that go through here. Next. Our education doesn't stop with the idea of classes or programs. We also host summer internships where people can be paid for work and really immerse strongly in leadership, horticulture, running volunteers, accounting, marketing, sales, et cetera, and just the joy of service in general. Our Garden Guide program reconnects people to healthy food in the garden. Next. And now our Urban Orchard Program, where in starting the thirteen urban orchards so far throughout our community, we now have infused another three hundred thousand dollars of state and federal funding to our community so that we could grow fruits in addition and enhance our tree canopy. Next. This is the Welcome Center and the garden before you all got ahold of it with the ARP funding. And, next, the Accessibility and Inclusion Garden Program. Many of you might remember that we were trying to make the garden more accessible to people with mobility challenges, people who were seniors like me that might begin to start having trouble, people who might want to go to our classes, or kids in wheelchairs that would want to volunteer with their classmates. Next. So being fully inclusive to everyone, what does that mean? Next. It means actually an area where you can drive up and wheel into the building, into the accessibility garden, et cetera. This is the area in the middle where it becomes a place to take displaced water and return it into the aquifer and increase pollination and show people about the benefits of native planting. planting. And look at that. This is a beautiful picture that will always be like my personal grand finale with this area that we thought would just merely connect people to the garden, but no, the impact of this has gone far beyond, as some of our community partners have begun to help people access food, not grown in the garden, but fresh, healthy food, by driving through and stopping and learning more. We have actually increased the amount of food we're able to distribute by over thirty thousand pounds this month alone, because Cultivate dropped off watermelon and peaches. Many of you may have seen that in our Facebook or social media presence. And within an hour or two, all, like Gaylords and Gaylords, eleven Gaylords of watermelon gone in two hours. Unbelievable. Even I had no idea of the kind of reach we've had here. Next. So why is all this important? Why are we celebrating this today? Why did I want to come? Next. What we're doing here is unprecedented. We are creating a model that has never been done before, a dignified free food hub that other communities can replicate. We're building at a minimum a safety net for people who are vulnerable and a maximum protecting our future through health and wellness and combating chronic illness for the future generations. It's my pleasure to answer any questions you have.
Any questions or comments from the council?
I have a couple.
Mr. Schatzel?
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, I'm sorry, I missed your name.
I'm Sarah Stewart.
Sarah Stewart, all right. Thank you very much.
That's funny, because there's a joke, a personal meme that I've won that knows me, is like, "I'm Sarah Stewart," because that's how I start every presentation, and I totally didn't.
Okay. Well, Ms. Stewart, I want to tell you, you may be unprecedented, but you have been -- some have emulated your behavior. I know at Penn High School, we have the Key Club students took a unused greenhouse and created a space where they're growing vegetables, and those vegetables are available to children who are from families that have food deficiency issues, so.
That's beautiful. Did Mel start that?
Is being emulated. I'm sorry?
Did Mel start that?
Mel left, and that's when the greenhouse was not being used anymore.
Uh-huh.
And so the Key Club, along with a couple of teachers, came up with this idea. They wrote a grant, they got the grant, and they've created this greenhouse for underserved students to be able to come in and get different things.
That's beautiful.
And one of the questions I asked them is, how do you guarantee the dignity? You know, I always think, I've never been in that situation, but if I were, it might be a tough situation to actually admit I am in that situation. B, to go get the food. President Reagan, in his inaugural speech in nineteen eighty-one, said, "The dignity of the individual is more assured in this land than in any other place on earth." How are you assuring the dignity of those people as they show need? How are you doing that?
I'm so glad you asked. We're shifting the script, the normal charitable dance that separates those who give from those who receive, and puts them in different realms. At Unity Gardens, you don't prove that you are in need. You don't have to share the story of how bad your life is, or that you've tried hard enough, or that somehow you have not been able to meet the needs of yourself, or your family, or your kids. There's nothing more disappointing and embarrassing for any of us. We all have that independence gene in us, and yet there's none of us that can't think about a time where we may have needed help, or felt scared, et cetera. So we make these universal truths about humans very explicit at the gardens. We talk about fear, and vulnerability, and need, and want. And so what we've done is something outrageous. We have completely unencumbered access for everyone, so whether you are perfectly able to afford a green pepper, or if you are absolutely hungry, you're equally welcome. And what happens is people come for the food and then find themselves in the same setting. And so when poor people hang out with poor people, it's lively, and there's a great use of humor, and the communication style is pretty fun in here and now, but not much else sprouts. But when you find people who suffer from poverty, and middle class, and wealth, together in the same environmental context, opportunities grow through developing relationships that sprout common understandings. And especially in the garden, where we're all a little disheveled and dirty, it's more difficult to see the difference between someone who has access to the best clothes, or a recent shower, or et cetera. So we see each other's strengths in new ways. I would not feel nearly as confident about what was my master's thesis and those findings had I not had fifteen years of actual experience under my belt. What happens out there is magical, and I'd love for any of you to come experience it and just spend a little time. It's so much fun. Thanks for asking.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I offer applause to this lady?
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say, I was fortunate enough, extremely fortunate enough, to attend a luncheon and tour two or three weeks ago. And I guess the only thing I'm going to say is, you know, I obviously was aware of Unity Gardens for quite a long time, but I'm not ashamed to say I didn't have a clue. Okay? It's phenomenal. And I'm saying that totally seriously. Unbelievable, what you guys are doing, and just the spirit of the volunteers, and how welcoming they are, and all the different things that you guys are doing. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you all for believing, especially in the early years when it was probably not even smart to do so.
Yeah, I would just like to say, Sarah and I go back a bit. So I was an early supporter of the gardens when she was starting out. I think I went to a presentation at the La Salle Area Neighborhood Association meeting, and that's when they were just getting started. And to see the growth and development, and how much they've been able to help people and grow the community, to see your vision come to fruition is just, I'm so amazed by it. You've done magnificence, Sarah.
We've done, all of us here at the table. And there's so many of you that have informed my journey.
Mitch should be in there.
Yeah. It's literally team effort, and I'm grateful.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, we will have a presentation on a bond resolution. Obviously, a resolution doesn't go through a committee hearing, but we wanted to put it on the agenda tonight so we can have a chance to discuss it as a council. So the first one up will be the St. Joe County Public Library.
Members of the council, Phil Fasenda from Barnes and Thornburg, Lisa Huntington from Baker Tilly is distributing a financial, short financial analysis with regard to the bond issue that is being requested. And I also have with me the library director, Stephanie Murphy, that'll be part of this presentation. The St. Joseph County Public Library, last month, adopted a bond resolution that authorizes bonds in the amount of, two series of bonds, one in the amount of four million dollars and one in the amount of six million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For the projects that are to be financed by the bonds are the renovation and expansion of the La Salle branch of the library, and the acquisition of property and construction of a new Western branch within the community. I mentioned the bond amounts. They, in addition to those, those bond amounts are maximums, and it is actually contemplated that the resulting, the actual bond amount that will be issued will be less than that. So the combined amount on the numbers that are being requested is ten million, three fifty, but it is estimated, and Lisa Huntington can address this further if you have questions, that the amount would be approximately eight million, six, eight million, eight point six five million, excuse me, eight point six five million. The reason for that is primarily that the library will be contributing equity to the tune of one million, seven hundred thousand dollars to the project. And so part of the reason that the bond amounts are where they're set is that they're not quite sure just yet, till they have further estimates with regard to the projects where they will be applying that one million, seven hundred thousand dollars of cash. In addition, as part of the project, or as part of the financing, the two thousand eighteen bonds of the library are rolling off in this budget year. And as such, there will be no tax increase that will accompany these two bond issues. It is, they're expected to close in La Salle bonds by the end of this year, and the Western branch bonds would be in the spring of next year. And two additional factors or statistics, the bonds are expected to mature in less than twenty years, and will bear a rate not to exceed five and a half percent pursuant to the resolutions adopted. I'm going to, before answering questions, I will ask Stephanie Murphy to just provide a little bit more detail on the projects and the need.
Good evening. So most of you are familiar with the main library right here downtown, and the fabulous renovation we did there, and the addition of the Community Learning Center with an auditorium, ballrooms, and classrooms that gets used all of the time and by so many people. So once we completed that, we knew it was time to take a look. I mean, that took a lot of time and a lot of effort. Once that was completed, we knew it was time to turn attention to our nine branch locations. So we began last year on a planning process. We did a survey of our patrons. We received back about twenty-three hundred surveys. We did some town hall-style meetings. We did some focus groups, including two with teenagers, so those are always fun. And at the same time we were doing the public input sessions, we were doing a really good inventory of our physical plant, so our HVAC, and our roof, and our parking lots, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and really determining what need we had. Out of that came a ten-year facilities master plan. I really believe that the best way to take care of our public buildings is to have a really good plan. It's the best way to be fiscally responsible. So we have this plan, and for most of our upgrades, like if you think about a building being twenty years old since the last time it was touched, if you think about your own house after twenty years, and it doesn't get nearly the use of a library, carpet, paint, HVAC, et cetera. So for most of our buildings, we're taking care of these projects out of our operating revenue and our library improvement reserve fund. So we've planned for the normal cycle of buildings. What we have on our west side branches is very busy buildings. Both of them have seen more than forty thousand visitors this year, and about ten thousand square feet. La Salle, which is right down the street from Unity Gardens, sees a hundred-plus kids after school every day, and I'm talking teenagers, these are not small children, in ten thousand square feet. It's very crowded after school. We also looked at number of visitors per square foot at those locations. La Salle actually receives more people than Francis, which we generally consider to be our busiest branch just by numbers, but when you look at visitors per square foot, how busy does it feel? These are two of our very busiest branches. And we see people using computers, faxing, copying, all of these things. There's not a lot of other places to get those services on the west side of the county. We're also aware of all the growth happening. I can come in on two every day. There's, I mean, the landscape changes out there all the time. We know how many jobs are coming out to that part of the county. There will be a lot more people coming in and out on Western Avenue, and that's why we want to move our Western branch, which is currently hidden behind Kroger, out to Western Avenue. We'll renovate a building that is a little dilapidated, that's the plan right now. Make it something beautiful and really contribute to the revitalization of that end of Western Avenue. Both will get a larger meeting room. We know there are at least some groups that can't meet at La Salle anymore because there's just not enough room. And we'll also add study rooms to those spaces. Again, all of this without any tax increase, since we have the one bond falling off. So that's what I have, if you have questions for me. Lisa did. And then Lisa from Baker Tilly is also here, if you have questions for us. She's got a couple things.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Huntington with Baker Tilly. We serve as municipal advisor for the library. So I gave you a brief presentation that discusses the proposed financing for the bonds. As you can see, we're looking at issuing two series, one later this year, and then, as Phil mentioned, one earlier in the spring. So for the La Salle branch project that will be issued this year, we anticipate about a four million dollar maximum borrowing amount. And then for the Western branch project, we anticipate that six point three five million. The library intends to contribute one point seven million to total for both projects. So when we factor that in, we anticipate that the total borrowing between the two bonds will be approximately eight point six five million dollars. As was mentioned previously, the library has some bonds maturing this year, so we're just replacing that debt service that's falling off with the new debt service for the bonds. Do you have any ques? That's a very high-level overview. Do you have any questions that I can answer?
Any questions from the council?
How much is rolling off on debt?
The amount of debt service that is rolling off in 2024 is approximately nine hundred thousand dollars. Okay? So if you'll turn to the chart that we've included at the back of the presentation, the chart illustrates, as you can see, that the teal-colored line is the existing debt service of the library. And if we look at 2025, that teal-colored line grows shorter, and then we just fill in the gap with the new debt. That gives us the ability to maintain the same debt service tax rate.
I might be asking a silly question here, but looking at the graph here, it does look like the bar goes above the estimated debt service tax rate in 2027, right?
Yes.
Can you explain that, and how that doesn't mean there's a tax increase?
Because we anticipate growth in net assessed value as we put these numbers together. We're very conservative. We anticipated two percent annual growth in net assessed value. The library has experienced over five percent in the last few years.
So the rate wouldn't increase, but the total amount that you would receive would increase?
Correct. Correct. These numbers are also calculated on five percent interest rates. Currently, the market is a little bit lower than that. We're issuing bonds at around four percent. And as you may know, that the Fed cut interest rates recently by half a basis point, so we could anticipate even maybe lower rates, which would lower the repayment of the bonds that we issue.
Any other questions, Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. President. My question's probably more for Stephanie. And I've asked this question to a few people over the last few years, and if it's not a simple question, or a simple response, I hate to put you on the spot right now, maybe it's just something.
I'll take my best shot.
What's that?
I'll take my best shot.
I'll take your best shot. All right. Why do we have separate library systems in St. Joseph County? And has there been any discussion in the last five to ten years by either board, or proposals, for what a merger of those library systems might look like? And I'm oversimplifying by saying a couple. I know that we also have some operations that are at the fringe of the county, too, correct?
Sure. So St. Joe County actually has four library system, well, two are standalone libraries, Wockerton and New Carlyle. And then there's Mishawaka, which is a system, and then Weir system. This goes back so, so many years, and it's based on township boundaries. And when people, more than a hundred years ago, how they decided to gather together to make their library systems. I haven't talked consolidation. Not entirely true, I did at one time when I was the director of New Carlyle, discuss with my board president the possibility of consolidation. Generally, people are very attached to their home libraries and home rule here in the state of Indiana, and they're afraid of losing sort of control.
You think? You think?
Yeah. Just what I've gathered in my years working in libraries. The Kern and Shepherd Report, how ever many, what was that, twenty? The Kern and Shepherd report, how ever many, what was that, 20 years ago or so?
What is oftentimes called Unigov.
Yes. There was a recommendation there to consolidate libraries. It comes up every so often. There doesn't seem to be a lot of will to get that done. I'm always open to conversations of collaboration, but generally, I find those don't go all that far.
And I'll say the reason why I asked was, prior to me serving on this body, the question came up from a couple neighbors who live right near the border of South Bend and Mishawaka. They happened to prefer, at that point in time, by proximity, it was closer to get to the River Park Branch.
Sure.
But they suddenly induced a, I believe it was a $50 annual fee--
Sure.
--to utilize the St. Joe County Public Library, which happened to be their closest library by the crow flies distance-wise. And I think it was very shortly thereafter, Mishawaka Penn Public Library, Penn Harris Public Library induced a similar fee to those who lived outside of their territory as well. So, I don't know how much remonstrance or feedback, negative or otherwise, that St. Joe County Public Library received, but I imagine if I've received the question personally, others have within the library system.
Sure. That predates me by a short amount of time. I do think people don't understand where their taxes go. So, even for this bond, if you live outside of our townships, that's not going to affect your taxes at all. Part of the reason for doing that, and I will say that's less of a fee than the taxpayers, most taxpayers probably pay for the library, is due to some newer models of digital collections. So, for example, Canopy and Hoopla are both cost-per-use items. So, every time somebody checks them out, we get a bill for that. And we were seeing a lot of use of those platforms from people who did not pay taxes to the library, and that is the source of that fee. But again, that's really hard and complicated to explain to people in general.
And even though I understand the township foundation--
It's so hard.
--of it, it's justifiably so frustrating for the citizens--
100%.
--who don't see these, in most, in many cases, invisible boundaries, right?
Right. And we're slightly less complicated than schools because we do at least run along township lines. But a lot of people don't even, when you make their library card, some of them don't even know what township they live in. So, it is complicated. I'm all for simplification of all things.
I appreciate the feedback of me putting you on the spot.
Sure.
I would just, I guess, personally like to thank you and your staff for the entire process that you guys went through as far as including, I don't know, local stakeholders, people in the community, before you guys, you know, really implemented this plan. There again, second time tonight, I was very fortunate to be a part of that process, and I thought it worked out very well. And I know some of the people that were included in that process really feel the same way. And it just seems like, obviously it's not, but it just seems like yesterday, when there was serious talk about closing the LaSalle Branch. So, when I sit here, and obviously, LaSalle Branch is near and dear to my heart, okay? And when I sit here and listen to those statistics that you just talked about, it's phenomenal. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further council questions or comments? If not, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Next up is another presentation. This one is the New Carlyle EDA Bond Resolution.
Bill Shalillo, Economic Development Director, part of Department of Infrastructure and Planning Growth with offices on 7th and 11th floor. Before you today, the discussion today relates to two resolutions that'll be brought before you on October 8th, that's your next meeting. One is to make changes to the New Carlyle Economic Development Area. A second is a bond resolution related to the sale of a bond for improvements out in the New Carlyle Economic Development Area. First one I'd like to talk about, so the map here, there's two sides. Exhibit A that says existing. This is what the economic development area looks like as it was expanded last year about this time. We went through a process last year, expanded the area, took it from two allocation areas to four allocation areas. Some of that split was based on the GM project. Some of it was based on the need to sell a bond, the GM bond, towards the end of last year. So, there was a lot of work that happened a year ago. What we're looking to do today, if you turn over the page, and what we have now is the goal to create a new allocation area, so allocation area number five. Allocation area number five is located in the northwest part of the map. This is an area that's really proximate to downtown New Carlyle. It would be really part of the east part of New Carlyle. If you look at the map from last year, there was a small stub of property that did extend into this area. What we're looking to do is take those parcels out of allocation area number one, put them into this new allocation area number five. Allocation area number five is really going to be used for some town-focused projects. There's some property acquisition and coordination on some projects that we, the county, are working on with the town of New Carlyle. So, we're excited about some partnership opportunities there. There's the opportunity, long-term, for some bike and pedestrian trail projects in this area. Also, some projects, some utility projects, some water and sewer projects that need to be done in this area. So, the opportunity to create this new allocation area will help allow some projects to move forward at a shared cost, if you will, so a shared opportunity, working with the town and with the Redevelopment Commission in this area. So, the first thing we're looking to do is create this new allocation area number five. This will add 34 parcels to the area and approximately 378 acres in this allocation area in number five. So, that's kind of the first piece of this. The second action that'll be part of the resolution would be to add all the properties that are part of the Amazon Web Service projects, so the properties that show up here in the map is allocation area number four. And a part of allocation area number three that would be then designated as designated taxpayers. If a property is a designated taxpayer, the designated taxpaying properties allow for collection of not only real property, but also personal property. So, that's something that we did with General Motors last year, St. Joe Energy Center in this area, Air Gas, and I think those are the only, and then, INTEC and Cote, or now Cleveland-Cliff's Tech and Cote, are all designated taxpayers in this area. So, we'd like to add those two properties, or those two property areas as designated taxpayers, again, to better collect revenue for projects and development in this area. And then, again, the third reason we're looking to do this is to sell a bond. Steve and Phil will talk a little bit more about the specifics of the bond. One of the projects that we have to do is part of all the development happening out on State Road 2 is make some intersection improvements at State Road 2 and Larison. As part of that, the county's commitment to that project is to do some targeted acquisition to bring in all of the right-of-way for that project. So, the county is part of our commitment to the project, will bring all the right-of-way to the project. There's some properties on the northeast corner of State Road 2 and Larison that would need to be acquired. So, we're working to do that. But as part of needing, or part of doing that, we need some additional revenue to do that. Again, some of the other uses for the money in the bond will be to do some targeted property acquisitions coordinated with the town up in this allocation area, number five area, and then also to start doing some planning work and maybe even some construction work on some of the utility improvements that need to be made in the allocation area, number five area, and kind of throughout the industrial area. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Again, I've got Phil Fasenda and Steve Dalton to talk about the bond-specific side of things, if there's any questions.
Questions from the council?
Mr. Root?
So, Bill, can you talk about area allocation five a little more on the east side of New Carlyle there? Can you summarize that area?
Yeah. So, it's an area that starts right at the Nesbitt Johnny Ditch, or on the east side of the property would be the INM substation, the Olive Substation, goes all the way to the viaduct. So, you see on the map there the roads. So, the viaduct is in that area. Then, it goes all the way north to include the Veldkoff properties. I think a couple of meetings ago, you approved a mini storage warehouse project in that area. And then, it comes south down and includes some area down at Winter Green and Edison Road. So, that's kind of the area south of the tracks. We know that we've got some water and sewer projects in that area, some maybe a lift station project, some other projects in that area. So, that's really kind of how that area got formed. A lot of that was formed in coordination with the town itself. No Mercy Kaufman, Town Council President, is on the call. She's been a great partner as we've looked to do this. And so, a lot of, again, a lot of these projects are going to be done in partnership with the town.
So, is that, the area allocation five, more utility work, the majority of that area?
So, really, the reason we're creating this area is really to, again, help with utility work, do some property acquisition and related demolition to that property acquisition, prepare some properties for a bike head trail that would hopefully, if everything works out right, the properties would be acquired in such a way that we could build a pedestrian trail under the train tracks, just to the west side of the viaduct. And then, assist in some other economic development-related projects. Again, that property north of Marble Lane, along Timothy. Again, there's a mini storage warehouse proposed for part of that site, but there's also been a housing project proposed for that site. So, again, an opportunity to work with the town and coordinate with the town on some projects in that area.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tanner?
Thank you. Bill, this is all part of a broader TIFF area, correct?
Correct.
Is this considered, are each of these allocation areas independent within the TIFF district? And by that, I mean, the growth in the tax base that exists within an allocation area, the funding is restricted to the infrastructure and economic development that is conducted within that allocation area, is my understanding of that.
Well, I could give you a very general answer. I see Mr. Dalton moving the microphone, and I think he could perhaps give you a more complete answer there.
I think, let me clarify your question. Are you saying allocation five money, can it be used in allocation one area? Is that your actual question?
I believe it cannot.
I believe it can, and Phil can correct me if I'm wrong, but because the economic development area is all supportive, I believe that it can be used five for one.
These are pieces of the overall puzzle.
It's an EDA, Economic Development Area, with five balloons in it. Phil, you want to correct me?
So, the actual standard in the statute is in or serving the area? So, if you have a project that you can demonstrate serves one or all of the allocation areas, then that project, you can use TIFF from whatever project it, whatever area it serves, because that's the statutory statement, so.
Is it interserving area?
In or serving.
In or--
In or serving, yeah. So, in or serving. And given the fact that these allocation areas abut one another, it's not, that's not a difficult situation. Sometimes, you know, you'll end up with a Redevelopment Commission funding a road that runs into an allocation area, perhaps from an area outside of the allocation area or ED, and EDA, you know, might be, you know, a mile away, and there's going to be improvements all the way in. So, that standard, that's often used as an example of in or serving. So, it doesn't have to be all contained within the allocation area. Typically, you think of it as being all within the allocation area, but that, the standard is in or serving.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. You want Phil to talk on the bond, too?
Yeah. So, just very quickly on the bonds, the Redevelopment Commission, this is a Redevelopment District bond. Those who were on the council back in 2019 would remember that the double tracking was done with a Redevelopment District bond. The, this functions like a general obligation bond, basically, with the pledge of special benefits tax, which is the same, if the county did a GEO bond, it would be the general obligation of the county's tax. In this case, it's the Redevelopment District, which is co-terminus with the county, with the exception of the entities within the county that have a Redevelopment Commission like South Bend, like Mishawaka. So, it's a, but it's also anticipated, like other recent bonds that the county has done, like the RDA bonds from earlier this year, that TIFF is going to pay these bonds. And TIFF will be pledged to these bonds, but the special benefits tax there is a backup. And as such, it will provide a much more favorable interest rate on these bonds. These are taxable bonds, so the interest rate will be higher than what you would see in your tax-exempt bonds. And the reason that they're taxable is to provide more flexibility with regard to some of the property acquisition that was discussed by Bill. And in the event that property is acquired and resold at a later date with tax-exempt bonds, that is a very difficult thing to do. But with taxable bonds, it's not.
Mr. Root, I have a question. Thank you. So, I'm not sure I understand this. So, are you saying this bond would be paid back by funds within that TIFF? TIFF funds would pay back this bond?
Yes, correct. Yep.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments from the council? Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. President. The designated, what was the term?
Designated taxpayer.
Taxpayer.
Yeah.
It was mentioned that that is to incorporate the personal property taxes. It's not my, this is a really ignorant question potentially. Their taxes may not go up or down because of that designation, but where those taxes go--
Correct.
--changes. So, rather than those personal property taxes going to the county as a whole, they would be designated within that allocation area.
Correct. They would, like the real property taxes, the personal property taxes that are not otherwise abated, if you will, would remain in the area.
And that is necessary in order to fund the bond issue?
Right, exactly.
Okay.
President Root, Mr. Tanner's question begs another question. Thank you, sir. So, who decides how the TIFF spends those tax dollars?
Well, the Redevelopment Commission does.
Okay. Thank you.
To which you appoint two members, and the Board of Commissioners appoint three members.
Thank you. All right. And then, finally, you say you've got the folks, you've got some buy-in from the Town Council in New Carlyle. Just in general, can you give me an idea how the town folks feel about this, this new District Five area?
Yeah. So, the conversations we've had with the town group is that, so the town has just recently finished its comprehensive plan. The town is now moving into the implementation of its comprehensive plan. I believe Mr. Caruso's on that committee, as a matter of fact. This gives the town opportunity to start to implement some of those elements within that comp plan. So, the coordination between the resources in the larger allocation areas or within the larger economic development area will help move some of those projects forward. So, I believe, based on the conversations we've had, that there's, you know, enthusiasm for moving forward. I don't want to oversell, you know, because obviously, it's been a long, complicated relationship over the years. But I think this is, again, a kind of a further step in moving forward with building that relationship and building the partnership with the town on these kind of things.
Long and complicated, that's one way to--
Is that fair and accurate?
Anything else?
Mr. Tanner? Mr. Shalillo, are there any rail corridor plans that might relate to some of this?
Yeah, absolutely. So, if you looked at the E and the L and the word marble, again, on the south side of the road there, we are contemplating a train station project. Now, as part of that train station project, we are looking at alternative sites. So, there's been a request to look at the west side of US 20 or Michigan Street for a potential station location as opposed to the station that we had proposed as part of the last study. So, there's the passenger rail service study. Then, we've also, I think a couple of months ago, you guys approved some rezonings for South Shore Freight closer to Smilax and 20. So, there's some rail study opportunities there for freight rail. And then, we continue to work with Norfolk Southern as we look at opportunities for rail. Norfolk Southern is the southern set of rails in that corridor, so continue to work with Norfolk Southern on rail. work with Norfolk Southern on rail opportunities in that area.
Was there any plan, any further to do anything with the former trailer park? Did we acquire that?
Yeah. So the Redevelopment Commission owns it. Actually, I think the Board of Commissioners technically hold title to it. We have done base-level demolition on the site. But again, I mentioned that there are some water and sewer projects that need to happen in that area. So we have held off on doing further demolition of the utilities, the roads, and things like that, until some of those other utility projects are ready to be coordinated with that. There's a major, I believe it's a major sewer line that runs from just west of the old, from the Caris Real Site through the old midget racetrack behind, or in, I can't remember, it's behind or in front of the American Legion, and then through the trailer park site. That needs to be removed. It's just in the wrong place. It's underserved or undersized, things like that, to allow for future development. But we didn't want to start tearing out the line because that was going to affect the houses to the east. So a lot of coordination has to happen. Again, this little, you know, $5 million bond will go pretty quickly, but will allow us to start doing some of the plans and specs to move those kind of projects forward.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, and before we get to this next step, I do want to say that we are going to take a recess until 8 o'clock, but I would like the council to weigh in whether you'd like to have the budget discussion in this room, as long as Jamie and Jen have done, if we're okay, in this room, the back room, or are we eligible to go to seventh floor? No, it's either this room or the back room. With council's preference on where to discuss the budget, sometimes this room's a little formal for a budget discussion. But if you want to stay here, we can, or if you want to move to the back room. I think we've lost most of the public that we were concerned about earlier. So thoughts?
I said just stay right here.
You want to stay here?
Yeah, right here.
All right. Let's take a 10-minute recess.